Good evening. Thank you all for being here. I now call to order the Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, 6:00 PM School Board Regular Meeting. If you would please rise and join me in a moment of silence. So we will now present the colors. Tonight, presenting the colors is Matanzas High School Army JROTC Cadet Vaughn, Cadet Kasha, Cadet Captain Smith, Cadet Weisenberg. The Matanzas High School JROTC is escorted by Advisor Major Mallard. Yes, and we have a special treat tonight. We're going to have the National Anthem sung live tonight by Ms. Lorelei Kilmer of Flagler Palm Coast High School.
Testing. Oh, there we go.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance first, but thank you for being ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may proceed.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
All right, you may be seated. Yes, thank you, Ms. Kilmer. That was beautiful. Okay, so we will move on to roll call, and we'll start down at the end of the dais.
Danny Nieves, FPC Representative.
Just Hani Strong, Matanzas High School Student Board Representative.
Lauren Ramirez, District Five.
Janie Ruddy, District Three.
Derek Barris, District One.
Kristi Chong.
Will Furry.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to our special announcements for this evening. And our first announcement is Music in Our Schools Month Proclamation presented by Ms. Amy Fulmer.
Good evening, Board Chair Furry and Superintendent Moore. So glad to see all of you. This is my 37th Music in Our Schools Month coming up in March. Over at the Fitzgerald, this past weekend, we had a full house for the Beatles Tribute 1964. And then this weekend, we have a full house of 30 marching bands from across the region. So we definitely believe in music in our schools, and we definitely want to support that. Today, I brought the board from the Fitzgerald Performing Arts Center, the Flagler Auditorium Governing Board, to celebrate Music in Our Schools Month's proclamation. But especially, I've brought Mark Dreyer, who is a member of our board, along to read the proclamation. Mark has had a child in music at Matanzas, who did very well there, a daughter. And he had a son that was at FPC in their IB music program. So he is definitely, he can do testament as to what Music in Our Schools Month. He is also a professional musician and a prominent attorney and a wonderful member of the Fitzgerald Performing Arts Center. Mark?
Welcome, Mr. Dreyer.
Thank you. To read his resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing March as Music in Our Schools Month in Flagler County. Whereas, for more than 30 years, March has been officially designated by the National Association for Music Education as Music in Our Schools Month, encouraging communities across the nation to focus on music education. And whereas, music education is a part of a well-rounded education for every student as outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act. And whereas, the purpose of this celebration is to raise awareness of the lasting positive impact of music education on the academic, personal, and professional growth of our students. And whereas, music education shapes the way our students understand themselves and the world around them, allowing for a deep engagement with learning. And whereas, music in our schools month reminds us that school is where all children should have access to music. And whereas, music education, students and communities throughout Florida demonstrate the importance of quality music education programs to the lives of young people. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that March 2025 is Music in Our Schools Month in Flagler County. And be it further resolved that Flagler Schools encourages our citizens to celebrate and acknowledge every day, but especially in March, that music education is an essential part of every student's well-rounded education. Adopted by the members of this Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof on the 25th day of February 2025.
Thank you. If you'd like to come up here for a photo? So next, we are going to do Crossing Guard Appreciation Day Proclamation, and it's being presented by Mr. David Bossadett.
Good evening, Chairman Furry, School Board members, Superintendent Moore. I'm honored tonight to read the resolution for our school crossing guards. As you're aware, we recognize them on February 7th for National School Crossing Guard Day. A resolution of Flagler County School Board recognizing February 7th as School Crossing Guard Day in Flagler County. Whereas each school day, regardless of weather, thousands of loyal school crossing guards ensure the safety of our children and families as they arrive to and depart from school. And whereas, the state of Florida prioritizes school safety and the significant role of education to ensure the protection of our children and the crossing guards who assist them. And whereas, the commendable service, responsibility, and professionalism demonstrated by our school crossing guards is recognized annually through the Florida Department of Transportation's award and School Crossing Guard of the Year. Whereas, the Florida Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles provides school buses and pedestrian safety resources to establish supplementary safety measures for school crossing guards and schoolchildren, families, and pedestrians they protect. And whereas, the first Friday in February is an opportunity for Floridians to recognize and celebrate the essential service and dedication these individuals provide to protect Florida's schoolchildren across the state. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that February 7th, 2025, is School Crossing Guard Day in Flagler County. Adopted by the members of Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on 25th day, February 2025.
Thank you for that, and we do really appreciate our crossing guards. And we also did have a hot breakfast for them here at the GSB earlier this month as well to honor them. And it was great to sit down and meet and hear their stories. So thanks for reading that proclamation. And we have another one for you, Mr. Bossadett. It's also National School Resource Officer Month.
It is, and we're truly blessed here in Flagler County to work with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. There's a great partnership. As you guys, as our school boards are aware, we have resource deputies on all of our campuses, too, at our high schools. And it's a great partnership with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing February 15th, 2025, as School Resource Deputy Day. Whereas, the National Association of School Resource Officers is dedicated to making schools and children safer by providing the highest-quality training to school-based law enforcement officers. Whereas, school resource deputies bridge gaps between youth and law enforcement and embrace the triad concept of school policing, serving in informal counseling, education, and law enforcement roles to support students and communities they serve. Whereas, by training law enforcement deputies to counsel, educate, and protect school communities, the men and women of Nazro continuously lead by example and promote a positive image of law enforcement to schoolchildren and school communities. Whereas, SRD programs across the globe are founded as collaborative efforts by police agencies, law enforcement officers, educators, students, parents, and communities to create safe learning environments, provide valuable resources to school staff members, foster positive relationships with students, and develop strategies to resolve problems that affect youth with the goal of protecting all children so they can reach their fullest potential. Whereas, school resource deputies are valuable and essential members of the education community and deserve unwavering respect and support from the public in the pursuit of keeping schools and students safe. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Flagler County School Board proclaims February 15th, 2025, to be School Resource Deputy Appreciation Day, a special day to show appreciation for our school-based law enforcement deputies and encourage all citizens to show their gratitude with displays of support and personal messages. Adopted by the members of Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the 25th day of February 2025.
Yes, thank you. And on behalf of the board, I want to express our sincere gratitude for all that you do for our students, not only keeping them safe, but being positive role models in their lives on campus. Yes, we'd like to invite you up for a picture to the front of the dais. Yes, we'd like to invite you up for a picture to the front of the dais. All right, now we're going to move on to our Spotlight section of the evening. And we're going to start off with Superintendent's Strategic Plan Spotlight.
Good evening. This afternoon at our School Board meeting, our School Board Workshop, we spent some time, extensive time reviewing strategic plan, Goal Number One and Goal Number Two. And I invite our community, our parents, to go back and watch that section as it really highlights our areas of focus around student achievement as well as increasing access for our student to Level Three courses such as AP IB, ACE Dual Enrollment, and other courses that align to that goal.
Thank you Superintendent Moore. So now we will move on to the Flagler County Education Foundation Spotlight. And we have Ms. Teresa Rizzo with us tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board members, Superintendent, and members of our community. I'm thrilled to bring you this month's Spotlight of the Flagler County Education Foundation and share some exciting events and announcements. First, we are looking forward to this Friday, February 28th, of our highly anticipated College and Career Fair. This event will run from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the Palm Coast Community Center. From 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, students from Matanzas High School and Flagler Palm Coast High School will have exclusive access to explore the fair, connect with representatives, and get inspired about their future. From 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, we open our doors to the public, inviting everyone to take advantage of this incredible opportunity. We're proud to host over 200 vendors, including colleges, businesses, government entities, and branches of our military. Whether you're exploring higher education or seeking career pathways or just looking for a connection to community resources, this fair offers something for everyone. We encourage students, parents, and community members to come out and make valuable connections. We will also be live on the radio for Free For All Friday that morning. And we're excited about that opportunity and collaboration with our local Flagler radio station. I'm also pleased to announce, to introduce Madison Asville as our new Assistant Director of Fund Development. Madison is a proud Matanzas High School graduate and brings a wealth of experience to our team from her previous role at The United Way. We are excited to see how her passion and expertise will enhance our mission and support Flagler County students and educators. Madison is, got deep roots here in Flagler County. Her father, born and raised here, former state trooper. And her mother worked for the city of Palm Coast. And she lives and breathes Flagler County, so we're excited to have her. Lastly, our annual Mardi Gras Gala is just around the corner. I can feel it. I'm ready for it to happen. Join us on March 4th at the beautiful Grand Haven Golf Club for an evening filled with fun festivities and fundraising. The Mardi Gras Gala is one of our big four signature fundraising events. And this event supports our Take Stock in Children program and our Senior Scholarship Program, which provides over a million dollars in scholarships to our local seniors. These initiatives provide life-changing opportunities for our students, helping them pursue higher education and becoming successful adults. So we invite everyone to join us for this unforgettable evening while making a lasting impact on the lives of our students. So on behalf of the Flagler County Education Foundation, we thank you for your continued support. Together, we're creating brighter futures for our students and a stronger community. We look forward to seeing everyone Friday at the College and Career Fair and next Tuesday at the Mardi Gras Gala. And if you need more information, flagleredfoundation.org. Thank you again for all of your support.
And I would like to just take a moment to really highlight the College and Career Fair. This is something that Ms. Rizzo and I have been talking about all year, is bringing into one centralized location an opportunity for our students. And so we have been pushing this for our families to take a part of this for our students during the day. But we really want to stress that the timeframe from 2:00 to 5:00 is open to our public. And so our families who homeschool their children, our families that are in private school, we invite you to come and be a part of this with us. At the end of the day, these are our children here in Flagler County. And we want to make sure that this resource is available to all of our students regardless of how they are educated. So come out, enjoy it. It's going to be a lot of good information in one location for our families and for our students. So thank you to the Ed Foundation for bringing this to life.
Okay, so then that leads us to the 2024 and 2025 Outstanding School Volunteer Awards. And Ms. Moore will be presenting.
Yes, I am very excited to recognize three individuals who consistently go over and beyond for our students. And so when I call your name, I do invite you to come here and stand in the front of the dais. And we will get a collective group picture together with these three representatives. The first individual represents Banale Elementary School. And we want to highlight the work of Stacy Smith. Thank you so much, Stacy. You can stand there. I do have a certificate for you as well. Next, representing Indian Trails Middle School, we have Ms. Mary Jo Warnoff. And finally, representing Matanzas High School, we have Ms. Violet Ockrider. Thank you so much, as these individuals represent the many volunteers that we have within our schools doing great work for our students, as well as our student volunteers as well that are doing great, great things. And we just invite the community, come and join them, stand alongside of them. There's a lot of work to be done and we need volunteers. So if you're interested in volunteering, you can go to our website and get more information about how you can get connected. Thank you guys so much for the hours that you pour into Flagler schools. We appreciate you.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to Junior Reserve Officer Training Corp, JROTC, presented by Mr. Reeves.
Good evening, Board Chair, Superintendent Moore. It's my pleasure, as I call our, come on up guys, our folks to the podium to share just briefly about their program. As a father who's had two students go through the JROTC program, it is exceptional. And we're going to give them just a chance to highlight and talk about their program, the impact it has on the students of Flagler County. And so it's my pleasure to introduce Lieutenant Colonel Baskerville, Baskerville, JROTC Air Force for FPC and Major Mallard for JROTC Army for Matanzas High School. Gentlemen, please come.
All right, good evening, Board, Chair Furry, Superintendent Moore. Greetings to all the friends and colleagues behind me. I am Lieutenant Colonel Melvin Baskerville. And I, with Master Sergeant Gardner Holland, are the senior aerospace instructors there at FPC Air Force JROTC. And between us, we have about 40 years of Air Force experience, which we try to impart upon 140 cadets that we have in our program. All right, our mission is to develop citizens of character. And we do that by broad-based education and curriculum, dealing with aerospace science as well as leadership education, where we teach them how to apply for college and public speaking and things of that nature, as well as a wellness program. So if you're ever on our campus on a Friday and you see some students running around, more than likely it's the ROTC cadets getting ready and getting in shape, all right? Now again, with our program, there's no obligation for students to join the military. We're not a recruiting service. But we do offer those recruiters to come in and talk to our cadets and kind of tell them what their military experience is all about from all the different branches, including my counterpart in the Army. I've been doing this for about eight years now, as well as Master Sergeant Holland, and we love it. One of our representatives here, the last four representatives of the student board for FPC has been ROTC cadets. One right here with Danny Nieves, he is my corps commander. And as you, guys got a chance to know her, you understand exactly the things that we impart upon our students. Just recently, we had an Air Force Headquarters Evaluation. They came down from Maxwell Air Force Base and looked at all our programs and made sure that our cadets run the corps. And through the leadership of Cadet Nieves, out of 100 points, our corps scored 98. All right, so she did a very awesome job. And with that score, we're in line to get Distinguished Unit Award with Merit, which we haven't done in about 10 years now. And so between her leadership and all the cadets in our corps, we've done some great things in our community. Every first Saturday of the month, you'll see us down at the beach doing beach cleanups. You'll see us render cuddles, just like our brother in Matanzas right here. But we also support the local vets in the area as well, doing military balls and going to the VFW and supporting those activities. And so I'm glad to be here to tell you guys about the wonderful cadets in our program. Sorry I didn't have a script, but I'm very proud of the work and efforts that our cadets do. So thank you for the time to talk to you guys about it, all right? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
To our distinguished Board members and Ms. Moore, thank you for taking the opportunity to just hear about our programs. Really means a lot having the support of the district at our level. Myself and First Sergeant Troy Caribello, we are the senior Army Instructor and Army Instructor from Matanzas High School, Army JROTC. Troy Caribello's been doing this for 19 years now. He'll be retiring at the end of this year. Myself, I've been doing it for eight years. This is my first year at Matanzas High School. And it's been just a fantastic experience. Just like what the Air Force's mission is, is very similar. Our mission is to motivate better, young people to become better citizens. We do that by providing leadership services to the community and personal responsibilities. And in doing that, we instill a sense of teamwork, self-esteem, and self-discipline. I want to reemphasize that JROTC is not a recruiting mission. We focus on three ways after high school, either going to college, going to a trade school, or going to the military. And we're there to support the kids in whatever path that they would like to choose. We are, report directly to the principal for all of our guidance and all of our evaluations and anything that she needs us to do. JROTC has a four-year curriculum program of instruction, which focuses from freshmen all the way up to our seniors. In that four years, we focus on self-development, leadership, civics, geography, global awareness, health and wellness, language arts, life skills, and US history. Some of the things that are good about JROTC, a cadet that does two years of JROTC also gets credit for a HOPE credit, so it allows them to get a little bit more flexibility within their schedule. And they also get a performing arts credit. Recently, I think in 2022, Governor DeSantis allowed students who do two years of JROTC and score over a 60 on the ASVAB to earn credit towards the school overall rating at the end of the year. So that's a bonus for the school itself. Our program is offered on a web-based system of cadet portfolio. The cool thing about this system is it's accessible to the students after they leave high school. So all of the work that they have, the letters of recommendation, all of their resumes, they can reach back and use that. There is a mentoring system within that system, so students that go on and do things, they can go back and leave feedback and students can reach out to them if they're going to pursue that career path and have somebody who's kind of walked through their shoes and guide them as additional mentor. In addition to the program of instruction, JROTC offers after-school activities throughout the whole entire school year. Color Guard offers, just like tonight, we offer Color Guard services throughout the community for events. We also have competitive Color Guard. We have physical fitness team that competes from August to November. A drill team which competes from November to February. We have an air rifle team which competes from November to February. And we recently started an archery team which goes February to March. In addition, we're looking for funding to get robotics and drones, hopefully next year, from our Sixth Brigade, which is located in Savannah, Georgia, which provides funding for our program. In addition, we offer field trips, summer camps, National Flight Academy, and like I mentioned, additional community support. So I've already mentioned the three past postgraduate. We're big supporters in providing them a way ahead after they graduate from high school. Depending on your questions, that's all that I have. And I just want to say thank you for your time and allowing us to present this today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Can you come forward for a picture? I'd like to get a picture. Okay, so now we will move on to District Spelling Bee Spotlight, presented by Mr. Reeves.
It's my pleasure to close out the spotlight this evening. I've invited our Spelling Bee winner tonight. If you've never attended the event, it is an exceptional event. It is rigorous, I can tell you, and intense. And, but very rewarding, and our students love it, and it's a great opportunity. So my pleasure tonight is to introduce to you the 2025 District Spelling Bee winner, Teddy Toden of Christ the King Academy. Teddy has always loved to read and that has had a major impact on his ability to spell. He enjoys reading a variety of genre, including nonfiction, history books, and fictional stories such as Percy Jackson and Lord of the Rings. In third grade, his teacher told his parents that he was reading on the 12th grade level. And she encouraged him to keep reading. He came in second place in the District Spelling Bee two years ago as a fifth grader. This year he won, and his championship round spelling word was "Astringent." Teddy, congratulations.
If you'd join us up front for a photo?
And Teddy is going to go on to represent us and the regional bee. And so I know he is preparing for that, and we will be cheering you on, Teddy. Congratulations, and we say win it all, buddy.
All right, so now we will move on to Approval of Minutes. I need a motion to approve 4.01 through 4.03.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Chong.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. So we'll move on to the agenda for tonight. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda, Superintendent Moore?
Yes, I request that we pull item 10.01 as it has not been executed by the requester. This mitigation will be brought back before you once it is executed and ready for your review.
Okay, so we will pull that. So then if there aren't any other changes or additions, like a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I do have an item on the Vendor Payments number 328646. I'd like to pull that so that it can be voted on separately.
Okay. Vendor Payments. Vendor payments. I'm sorry, which number was it?
328646, check number 902425119.
Okay, so we will move that to an action item.
Additionally, I would like to pull to discuss for transparency purposes the expense for Flagler Broadcasting.
Okay.
And San Panther Education. And finally, on the PO approval, to make sure that, again, for the record, that it's clear, the imagined salary payment for Colleen Fonte.
So it was item 328646 from the vendor payments.
N2Y LLC, correct.
And then Flagler Broadcasting and San Panther Education.
Right, those are all from vendor payments, and the salary payments off of the POs to be approved in excess of $10,000.
Okay. We'll move this to the finance action. Okay. So I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I do have one other item on the Human Resources Consent. The addition to the superintendent suite, I think it warrants a review of the, or a sharing of the change in representation and providing insight into the qualifications and why that individual is chosen.
You said under, this is another consent item, under Human Resources?
Yes.
So it was under personnel, okay.
Correct.
So 11.02 is the one you want to?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move that to Human Resources Action, 11.07. Okay, are there any other changes?
Not changes, but we're going to go through line items, right?
Those items that were pulled by Ms. Ruddy, we will discuss them in action. We're going to still approve the consent minus those, and then we'll revisit those particular items when we get to them.
Well, then let me.
And may I add that our team is prepared, because this was not through the second phase of the workshop, our team is prepared to give a brief overview of each of these categories, if that pleases the board.
Yeah, I just had some PO questions, just like we would at a workshop.
Yep, we are prepared to do that.
Okay. Very good. So you had PO questions, but let's move that to Finance also. Okay. Okay. Well, then I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Ruddy.
A second.
Second by Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? We will move forward with the agenda. So. All right, so we will then now go on to public comment. Do we have anybody registered for public comment this evening?
Not on agenda items at this time.
Okay, no one on agenda. We will have an opportunity later to speak on non-agenda items for the members of the public. And now we will move on, we'll close public comment and move on to our consent. Now, just for the benefit of the public, we do have two workshops prior to our business meeting, and we do workshop these items, so we will be approving them in block form with the exception of the ones that were pulled for discussion in action later this evening. So we'll start off with Finance Consent, 7.01 through 7.07. Have a motion to approve?
I move to approve with the items removed. So we're going to talk about these like later in action?
In the action portion, once we get done with consent?
But should we be approving it first?
For clarification, Board Chair, I think what they're asking for is that once you get the motion to approve, that you open the floor for discussion before calling the question.
You have discussion right now on the consent items here. Okay, we can do that, yeah. So if I have a second, let me just back up here. So do we have a motion?
Ms. Ruddy, second by Ms. Chong. Now it's open up for discussion.
Okay, we open discussion now. Go ahead.
Okay, so the, let me go here. Building renovations, is that one building? I just was curious, I wanted to hear more about that.
Can you tell me which consent item you're on?
Oh, I'm sorry, under, I think it was 7.02.
And the vendor?
Got, DA CG for FPC.
Good evening, Board, Chair, Superintendent Moore. The DA CG is on Building 12 at FPC. This is a modification that we're doing where we're adding fresh air into that building. That's the locker rooms over at FPC. Restrooms, we're renovating restrooms and the office spaces. And we're removing basically the hard ceiling and then making a drop-down ceiling in that building.
Anybody else had questions on that one? And then I saw pressure washing. I was just curious, is that something, would it be more of a benefit if we had our own equipment, or is it just too big of a job that we need to hire that out?
Right, we do have a pressure washers on each one of our zones, but that's normally for your day-to-day operations. The pressure washing that you're seeing here is basically on roofs or for large areas. We just pressure wash the auditorium where you have to have a lift, rather high lift, and it's just more economically feasible to get a pressure washer company or contractor to come out and do it. But we do the day-to-day pressure washing at each of our schools.
I think that was it for me for now.
Is there any further discussion?
No, Mr. Freeman had previously informed me, and I was pleased to hear that we're within budget on the Matanzas expansion, which a lot of those payments were related to, so I'm excited that that's in budget.
Yeah, that's good news. Okay, well then I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? We will move forward. We will now go on to Academic Services Consent, 9.01 through 9.03. Have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Chong. And a second by Ms. Ramirez.
I do just have an item for a question there.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
I noticed that all of the schools for the Future Problem Solving Trip, the payment for the student portion was zero except for FPC, which was $100. So I was wondering why there's a difference for the students at that school.
We will follow up on that as the state trip is usually covered at the district level, so I am unsure what that additional cost is, but we can definitely follow up.
I will follow up with Ms. Ferrera at the school and give an answer back for you on that.
Okay, then I move to pull that particular item, unless it would cause undue delay for that student to participate.
I'd need to check to see what the trip is.
If it is pulled, that trip, let me, let us pull it. The board does not meet prior to them leaving, as I do believe that trip is in March, but we can definitely pull that up. I don't have it right here before me, but we can pull that up, so if we can just, give us one moment?
Sure.
To pull that information.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, that trip is in March. It is, and they are due to travel before the board meets again. And so we can definitely get this information back, but I would then need to sign it as emergency, which I do, I can sign it when things come up for overnight travel in an emergency situation, but that is what we would need to do in order for those students to be able to travel.
Is there an alternative, such as if we approve it this evening, but there's a request perhaps for the administration to follow up to ensure that they are capitalizing on any funds that are being shared with the rest of the schools as well?
So they, sorry, the dates are the 23rd through the 26th of March, as Ms. Moore was saying. They also put down for their fund sources as internal accounts and fundraising. So sometimes when they put that in there, it is an estimate to try and make sure they cover the costs as they are fundraising towards the event. So I could lay a clarification, did they raise enough money to cover the cost? Would be my take back from that.
Yes, so this is not a cost that is to the student. This is any additional cost per student would be coming out of the internal account or whatever dollars that they have had for fundraising.
This is provisions for those unable to pay, so they're covered either way, and I can find out if they were able to raise the funds to cover all the students that were attending.
Okay, because the other schools also put $0, but I believe Indian Trails, for example, is trying to raise funds as well, so it seems they have that covered.
There are costs beyond the registration, that is the portion that the district pays for, for them, for their registration. There are costs that are associated with the state trip. If those students are not able to raise all of the funds, we do not prevent them from going. However, if they were to advance to the international, it becomes a little bit more difficult for us to afford that at the district level for everyone. So we are confident that whatever the cost is, it would not prevent our students from being able to attend, be it is $100 or $0.
And just, you know, this was initially submitted back in December, two months, two plus, almost three months ago. They would have been fundraising over that time to help pay for that, so we'll get an answer for you regarding that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to leave this intact for approval? Okay. So then we will call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? It passes unanimously. Okay, so we will then now move on to Operational Services, 10.01. I need a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, apologies, I'm looking at my computer, which doesn't have my crossouts here. Yeah, we will skip that, and we will go now to Human Resource Services. And we are just going to do 11.01. I need a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Ruddy, a second by Ms. Chong. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? It passes unanimously. Okay, so now this will move us on to our action items. We'll start with Finance Action, and we will address the items that were pulled from the consent. So we can start with the 328646 purchase order.
I need to recuse myself from that expense, from voting on that particular.
Just for clarification, it's not a purchase order, it is on the vendor.
Oh, I apologize, yeah, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was pulled for recusal?
Yes.
All right. All right, the next item that was to discuss was Flagler Broadcasting.
Well, wait a minute, we had to vote on that one specifically, right?
Well, I'm, separately, okay, gotcha. I just put them all into the Finance Act. So we will then vote on that now, so I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bars and a second by Ms. Ruddy. All in favor? I mean, Ms. Ramirez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? It passes unanimously. Okay, we will now move on to the next action item in Finance, which was for Flagler Broadcasting.
Yeah, so there's some expenditures that I am curious as to what the advertising or promotional materials that Flagler Broadcasting is doing for us that we felt weren't getting enough coverage through our outreach.
Each week, we share multiple different items on the radio, be it activities that are coming up, upcoming meetings that we are having, just a range of information out to the community as another way to get information to a group of individuals that we may be missing.
And so this is, has been recurring on a regular basis, and we don't feel like our website, the phone calls, the Remind apps are enough for that? Is there anything legal that's requiring us to be posted on the radio?
Right now, as we get our communication surveys specifically back from individuals, we continuously hear that individuals don't know or aren't aware of what's happening. We think about our radio advertisement as an opportunity to reach specifically our community, which we also have, you know, it's necessary that we reach those individuals who may not be getting Remind, may not be following us on our social media outlet. So again, this is another opportunity for us to share information with the broader public, and that this has been definitely happening over the course of this year. I'm not sure how many years we've had this relationship and this contract happening.
Typically, when you place radio ads, you choose time of day and station based on certain demographics, which demographic, do we know that information on these expenditures?
I do not. I know it runs, our main time is on Mondays, but I cannot tell you offhand what the exact time of day that is that happens on Monday. But I'm sure we can get, you know, some additional staff members up to provide the information to you if you would like.
No, thank you, I'm good.
We talk a lot about communication, about what we want to, you know, getting out information to our, to our community. I think this is a way for us to do that. Now, if it does come to a point where we have to, you know, continuously to tighten our belts, which I believe we're probably going to end up having to do, we need to readdress this moving forward. But at this point, I think it is a way for us to communicate with our families above and beyond what we're able to do with our own social media. But I do think we probably need to continue to monitor that as we move forward into the future.
I just feel we have our own in-house communications team and to make these type of expenditures when we have a plethora of lower-cost or free options.
Okay, so I just would add to this here that, you know, I agree with Mr. Bars that it is a good method to communicate. We do have to watch our spending for sure, and, you know, but what I will say is that a, the previous board had tasked the superintendent also with, communication was one of the biggest complaints we were having. And so we were, we tasked her with getting that communication out, not just to our parents and students, but to the community at large. And I would say some of the tools that we have in-house are more, the focus or the audience is, tends to be parents and those associated with that education in Flagler County, where the radio is a broader reach. reach. It reaches the entire community, telling the community what's happening at Flagler Schools, because they're also stakeholders. So that, that is where there is value in, in these type of broader broadcasting messages, in my opinion, so.
Have we, was there a plan when this initiative was undertaken in order to evaluate the, the outcome? Or have we gone out and resurveyed?
It was at the, it was, it was at the direction of the superintendent. This is just her, this is her, their marketing budget that they're, they're working within. And so if we want, what I'm, what I'm getting at is if we wanna, if we wanna workshop this to, to, to limit where advertising is, as this board, we can, we can definitely have that conversation. But i- if this is within the, the spending limits of the superintendent, then they're just, they're just do it, using their, their, their funds available to do what they feel they need to do.
Right. But it's also on approval here for the board. So we have that responsibility to ensure that those dollars are small, large, are being spent, or else this would not be up for a vote, right?
Absolutely. I think it's a great discussion, a hundred percent, you know, I, but this is already, these are already for ads that, this is to pay for ads that have already been purchased, correct?
Sure, which is most of the stuff that we're approving.
Right.
All right. And so what I'm saying is that I would like to take a look at some of these things that maybe are not the essentials, when we already know that there are some big changes regarding our funding and our student population that we're gonna start to need to think about, and what's essential and what's not.
Okay. Well, we can, we can definitely move that to a board member request, so that we can, right now, we're doing a great thing. We're talking about the, the current expenditure and what we do in the future. You know, that would, that would happen at another, on another agenda item at another meeting. But thanks for bringing it to light and your concerns regarding that expenditure. Are there any other comments or concerns in regards to this particular item?
That's the WNZF one. Is that what you're referring to, Janie? Just wanted to make sure we're looking at the same thing.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, probably just reviewing, you know, as a board request, the contract, because I know radio ads, you, you pick how long, what days, what stations, and, you know, just discussing it later.
Right. Well, if you could say that, we will come to the board member requests section later. If you could just make a note, so we can make sure the superintendent jots it down at the appropriate time.
And, and I just wanna add that especially as we go into budget season, and we make whatever changes it, there are that we need to make in order for this board to set the budget that we're going to be utilizing for the year, it is then my responsibility to use those dollars appropriately to move forward the organization. And so, being very clear that when it comes to the setting of the budget, here's, here are the dollars that we have allocated, then that is when my role steps in to identify how we, how we use those dollars. So I just wanna continue to bring that forward as well.
Okay. So on this item here, do we have a, an actual line item for the Flagler Broadcasting to reference for the approval?
I just saw it.
I didn't have time to jot it down earlier.
The number?
Yeah, the.
328781.
28781. And is this a, is this a vendor payment?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Is there any other discussion regarding this item?
Mr. Furry, there's actually another payment, 328680 as well.
I'm sorry?
There's a second check payment for WNZF.
Okay.
328680. There's two in this check run.
Okay. So I have 328781 and 328680, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Bars.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chung. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the vote passes four to one. And we will now move on to the next item, which was San Panther Education.
Yes, correct.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. In my query, my understanding is that this was a consulting service in order to secure grant funds. And it looks, I'm sorry, at first glance, it looks like, is it eight thousand dollars paying this organization? So I just wanted to know what is, when should we anticipate news of the results of that work and consultation?
Sure. This particular consultation was used for the cap grant to procure the equipment and supplies that were already secured through the grant. The funding was secured, but then we contracted for the grant manager for this piece. We are just starting that process, and Ms. Reeves may be able, be able to speak a little bit better to that. But it was really for the securing the items that were awarded in the grant.
So we hired somebody to buy the items that we earned in the grant?
It's.
Thank you, ma'am. So we hired a grant manager, and then we had to, we set funds aside in specific categories. It might be for lumber. It might have been for a vehicle, a Ford 250, F250, to go to the ag department, a trailer. So we identified items in the budget, right, that was approved. But then you have to actually go out and procure and line up those things and items. So Mr. Blair, who was our CTE coordinator, he has left and gone to Seminole County. And so today, I've started working with the grant and our grant manager in this process. So I know our truck is in Duval County, and she'd be expecting that delivery within a couple of weeks. We just approved some veterinarian items for our vet services at FPC, and going through the items to make sure that we procure and utilize all those dollars to, to maximize our efforts with this cap grant.
So this is to provide services because a full-time team member had left that role?
No, ma'am. This was actually, it came before the board a few weeks ago. I know Mr. Bars asked a question about it at, at the one o'clock, and we, we answered the information about the, about the grant and about this position. This position was to kind of help us manage those dollars to make sure we maximize our effort and leverage them to get sure as much as our resource we could and not leave any dollars on the table.
So we feel that this expense of this, what is this, eight thousand dollars for this particular month? What is the ongoing total expense?
I will tell you, it's, it's approximately twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand dollars total.
And does that get paid directly out of the grant?
Yes, ma'am. It was not funded through the general fund.
We feel that this person's services in purchasing and securing and those, and spending those dollars exceeds the twenty-five thousand dollar value we're automatically paying this consultant?
Yes, ma'am. We feel like we're getting value from that, because it is a little bit complicated. As we work through the state, for instance, we've been trying to procure this vehicle, this truck for our ag department for about three months now, going through all the, the requirements for DOE, to make sure everything is in place. As just one example, that purchase is over fifty-some thousand dollars.
Okay. So there's a lot of, what you're saying is maybe special requirements, laws, whatever, that makes it necessary to have a particular expert on that?
There's several nuances to it, especially, the CTE world is ever evolving. And so we want to make sure we had someone in place to kind of help us navigate this. This individual had been hired by other districts to do the exact same thing.
Okay. I appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Absolutely, ma'am.
Okay, is there any other discussion on this item? Okay. So the, I see here, Ms. Womack, that there's actually two check numbers are the same. Is that just because you, you broke, it was one check, but you broke out two?
When a purchase order is done, there could be multiple line items, depending on what is purchased. So when the items are received, they are received by line item. So when you see multiple lines for a check, it's because there's multiple line items received that have been paid with that check.
Okay, got it. It was all one purchase order?
Correct.
Okay.
And you can actually see the purchase order on the right side.
All right. Okay, yes, I see the numbers match there. Okay. Okay. So I need a motion to approve check number 328656.
Move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Ruddy.
Second.
Second from Ms. Chung. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? It passes unanimously. Okay. So now, that moves us down to Academic Services, 16.01 through 16, oh, well, we have 16.01 first. I need a expulsion with services. I need a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Bars.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ramirez. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? It passes unanimously. We'll now move down to 16.02, expulsion with services. I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion from Ms. Chung.
Second.
Second from Mr. Bars. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? It passes unanimously. Okay. Now we will move down to Operational Services Action, 17.01. ITT Community Development Corporation Release Agreement. Need a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Ruddy.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ramirez. Any discussion?
None, other than thank you, sir, for your information today that provided us the clarity that we needed based off of this particular ITD community development issue, and making sure that we're the sole lister for these properties that belong to Flagler County Schools. So thank you very much.
I'd like to point out that.
Sorry. I'd like to point out that this agreement will need to be signed. Once the board, if the board approves it and signs it, it would need to go to ITT for them to sign it. And we are working with the developer to make sure that, that happens.
Thanks for that clarification. So I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? It passes unanimously. Okay, now we are at Human Resource Services. We have 18.01, Special Leave Application. Need a motion to approve?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Chung.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bars.
I, I would like to discuss this item.
Okay.
So under this extended leave, is this classified as a sabbatical or?
It's technically non-classified as a sabbatical.
No.
I imagine what I can think of. For example, they were gonna go get a fellowship. Classifying the older path experience.
Yeah, so in reviewing the board policy between the workshop and, and this one, you know, there were different types of leave, right? And I understand that. What I'm trying to gather and grasp, Mr. Delaney, if I could have you weigh in, is that none of those policies other than FMLA require the school district to hold the position for the individual, from my understanding, in, in our policies as they currently stand?
We are not required in this instance to hold a position for this employee either.
Right. But in our workshop, my interpretation of what was to unfold after the leave occurs is that other individuals would absorb those duties. And so I was assuming, and if I'm incorrect.
So this is just, we, we have this happen in many positions across the district, especially this time of the year, that a permanent position may not be hired. So what Mr. Ule explained is that this leave will run until June 30th. At that point, when we bring forward recommendations for hire for our entire staff, be it those who we're gonna, we're going to reappoint, individuals that we may not reappoint, at that moment, that is when I, as the superintendent, would be bringing forward either a recommendation in order to keep this employee on or not. At that point, you would have another portion of leave that would be brought before you as a, as a, as a board. But there is no, there is no requirement at this time for us to hold this position either.
But that's what we would be essentially doing? That's what the plan is?
We would be doing that if, at that time, I determine that that is the, the direction that we're going. We would be doing that at that time, if that is the recommendation.
And it's always hard, right? I'm not, I'm trying to separate, right, the individual and this particular instance from, you know, broader policies and trying to also imagine a situation where we had a teacher perhaps, or what if you, Ms. Moore, were to ask for a three-month leave, where it's not classified as one of the, as a sabbatical that is more protected or FMLA. In our leave policies, it did say we could approve that. I didn't see anything outlined about reserving that position for that individual to come back into that role. I'm just looking, you know, as what is the impact of this overall? And can we provide this equally across the board, no matter who might ask for it?
I will add that last year, we did run into a situation, I completely agree with you, our guiding principles, when it outlines getting to yes, our team will say, how do we get to yes and be able to continue to say yes? Like, what is our system for doing that? So currently, we do have one other employee that is an instructional staff member that is on that, on this type of leave. All of those first come to the superintendent, and I make a determination if this is something that we can grant before we bring this before the board for consideration. If it was something that we were not able to approve, then that would not come before you. That would be stopped at my spot.
So what is this type of leave classified as then?
This, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact board policy in front of me. This is identified in policy down towards the bottom, where it's, it's a extended leave where the employee does receive compensation. And it's the compensation piece that requires a special action item by the board in this case. Like I said, we currently have an employee who's a media specialist who's in Morocco, receiving compensation, and this, this leave went through the same process. It's a, it is a leave of absence. It's not an FMLA. And it does run within our parameters of being able to do a leave up to a year across fiscal years, even though it's not a medical reason.
But let's, let's be clear about this now. You're saying with pay, though, but he is, he's been paid with his annual leave that he's accumulated. Once he, that is exhausted, he goes with personal leave without pay.
Absolutely.
So I just wanna, I wanna be clear with that, because that does, it seems like he's gonna be gone for that time period, and we're gonna be paying for it. It's gonna be whatever benefits that we already provide for him and any other school district employee, that he runs that out, and then he'll be on leave without pay. And we have a, we have Ms. Moore, who is executive branch of this, who is making the determination, I'm guessing, to say that you're okay with how this is going to work, and you feel like this can operate the way it needs to operate, with him being gone in this particular time, with duties being separated between what you deem appropriate within the organization. Am I, am I correct in that?
I do. It is before you, because it has come across my desk, and I have approved this for review by the school board, and approval by the school board.
And my question. And my question is that, essentially, can we uphold this particular, or grant these situations on a continuing basis and not run into issues where people are feeling like maybe in the future, if it's declined, that they have some sort of suit against us? Because we are not equally applying this leave or granting this leave? Yes.
The only past practice I'm aware of at this point was the one that was, was approved. I don't believe, because each one of these is handled on a case-by-case. I could tell you numerous stories of where we have crossed fiscal year with FMLA folks, where we didn't, their FMLA had been exhausted, but it was the purview of the board to be a caring organization and to reach across the fiscal year with those folks. But, each one's considered on a case-by-case.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Delaney about what risk we might run.
Sure. All of these are going to have to be considered on a case-by-case basis, but it sounds like in this particular set of circumstances, there are legitimate reasons that have been reviewed by the superintendent. The employee has earned the benefits or has access to those benefits. It's hard to predict what a future scenario might look like, but if you had another employee who did not have a good plan for having their work distributed through the department, and the superintendent was not approving them, I, you know, you would have to sift through the facts, but you can imagine scenarios where there would be a legitimate basis for this type of request being denied.
So, we are prepared that any individual who comes forth, exhausts their personal leave, wants to leave under the different categories that are separate from FMLA or sabbatical, and if the other individuals are able to or willing to absorb their responsibilities and/or we choose to absorb the financial cost of a long-term sub, if it was a teacher, that this is something we're saying that we can consistently grant?
We are, we are, I am saying, as the one that will initially review, review these items, we are prepared with a system to review any requests that comes before us and make sound determination as to what we, what we present or recommend to this board.
I think we're venturing into, you know, policy, future policymaking here. I think we need to focus it back on the agenda item itself, and is there, is there anything, any additional information you need to be able to either have a reason not to vote for this specifically to the scope of the agenda item itself?
I'm not understanding your question. It sounded like a double negative, but I might have interpreted it incorrectly.
It's either, either we vote to approve the leave request, or we don't, right?
Yes, I know those options, but I'm also trying to, right, that I want to ensure that we're doing our due diligence in order to, that we can continue and that these types of leave requests, either historically or in the future, are going to be applied equitably. You know, I want to make an informed vote.
Sure, and it's all, that's all good information. I'm just saying that those are conversations for changes in the future. We're going to deal with what we have on the plate today, and so, it's not a matter of what happened before, what we're going to do with the next request. It's, it's what do we need to make a vote today? Is there anything more that you need to be able to?
Can I ask, just now that, what would be the difference between this and then just a regular leave of absence that we see when we, we see those names? Just.
And so, even though we're not paying the salary, would the, the school board's share of other benefits be paid out during that time period?
Yes, they get paid out during the time that actually won. In this case, for confidentiality reasons, I can't.
Right, and that's why I don't want to be specific on what benefits, but.
But, as soon as their benefits are exhausted, they would like to.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could add maybe one more point of clarification.
Please do.
A lot of this does come back to policy, and if the board is uncomfortable with the current state of its policies in relation to leave, that's something that could be addressed in the future, and maybe that's something that we should put on a workshop.
Yeah, I agree, because even in the areas where it is recognized, sabbatical or even the generic personal leave, it doesn't specify some of these parameters. For example, expiring your personal leave, whether or not we would pay the benefits that were, or the school board portion of those benefits. So, I think that would be appropriate to make sure we address on, in our review with Neola.
Okay. So, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Passes unanimously. Okay, so, now, that leads us to, we moved eleven point zero two to action, and Ms. Ruddy, that was your request.
We just did eleven point zero two, I believe that was.
So, that was eighteen.
You had a question about staff and assigned to the superintendent's suite?
Oh, yes. So, I apologize. You know, one of the very important roles was just hired, and that's the legal representation to a school.
Wait a minute, for a point of clarif, order here, we need to make this for a vote and for have, it needs to come up for a vote, and then we would need to just have a discussion because it's an action item. You can still do that, but a vote has to, we have to say.
Yeah. Okay, so, I need a motion to approve eleven point zero two.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Ms. Chong, a second by Mr. Bars. We now open for discussion.
Yes, I just wanted to have Mr. Roulette take this opportunity to share for the public the change in the legal representation, as well as to highlight the credentials regarding the individual that was chosen for that position, if you could.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just a little background history. Juris doctorate from Florida State University of Law. He is currently a member of the Florida Bar. He has served in the State Attorney's Office on the Eighteenth Circuit. He was promoted to Senior Attorney of the Office of General Counsel for the Division of Real Estate. After that, he went into private practice and has practiced for three different firms in administrative law, in litigation appeals, and commercial law.
Can you also clarify if this is?
I'm sorry, Andy teaches, that's in university law.
Is this a contracted position for, like, say, is this a three-year contract, or is this yearly, like?
We are all on annual contract. He's on a abbreviated annual contract, which extended from his initial hire until June 30th. At that point, like the rest of us, July 1st, he's arguing, will we be moved on or will we be moved out?
I'm curious if there has ever been a, more than a one-year contract for perhaps critical roles like this, maybe difficult to fill roles? Has that been something that's been entertained before?
State statute allows for that, allows for it for any, any administrator up to senior staff. The only one I'm aware of in the five years that I've been here was Ms. Gavin Hattie, multi-year contract. No other administrator that I'm aware of has had a multi-year, other than superintendent.
Yeah. I think part of the advantage of a one-year contract is if you're not, if you're not pleased with the services, right, there's an exit. And so, right, either one has a pro and con there. But, thank you very much, I appreciate sharing that, because it's a big change that I just wanted to make sure was very clear, and looking forward to working with him.
Not on that particular topic, but it's in the side of that document that we're talking about. I was noticing that we have, related to bus drivers, we have had four or five bus drivers leave, and then hiring, we have none. And I'm a little concerned about the direction, not direction, but the critical need for bus drivers that we're not being able to fill. I spoke to Mr. Walker yesterday, and it looks like they're, I think they're going to be wrapping a bus, doing some things for, trying to promote being a bus driver, to get people on board. I just want to bring that up as a topic that I think that we need to all continue to watch, which I know we are, as we get into those critical needs of, we got people that are leaving, but we're not replacing them. So, just as a, as a point of discussion.
Will they be at the career fair on Friday, trying to, the bus transportation?
Transportation in particular? No, but I know HR will, will have representation there.
To promote that in our newspaper.
The only difference from transportation and the rest of our departments is they have a very small cushion of substitute bus drivers that they move forward as, you know, through attrition. So, not to say that now we need substitute bus drivers, without a doubt, but in that case, they are, they are staff with a small cushion.
Yeah. Thank you for that, sir.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Then we will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. We have been taking notes over here, and there's a question has come up about an earlier item, and I just wanted to make sure that we didn't leave anything off. The question relates to item seven point zero two in Imagine Schools on page two, and I just wanted to confirm whether we have had a vote on that item or not.
No, I don't believe we have.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
My, my recommendation would that we go ahead and address that through a vote or discussion if needed now.
Okay. So, we will start off with, I need a motion to approve seven point zero two.
A motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bars, second by Ms. Chong, and we're open for discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight for anybody who is looking at the expenses and might wonder, why is an Imagine role being paid out in this way as opposed to out of the Imagine financials that are set aside? So, Ms. Warmack has kindly agreed to share that insight?
Sure, and just for clarification, this is an actual purchase order, not an actual payment yet. This is part of the Title II grant. So, for many of our grants, the charter schools get the pro-rata portion of FTE versus the whole district FTE. They choose to how, they, they choose how they want to spend their portion, as long as it's in line with the actual budget that's approved by DOE. So, the charter school has asked to spend their portion for a data coach for themselves. So, as those funds are funneled through us and where they're passed through, what happens in teaching and learning is Mr. Reeves has them submit payroll documents, timesheets, twice a year for payment, reimbursement of their portion of the grant funds. So, what you're seeing in this purchase order is the first half of the year, payments for salary and benefits of their data coach. You will see another PO of this similar amount for the second half of the year. Again, this is grant funded through the Title II dollars and is their respective portion that they are allocated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Warmack. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Then we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. Okay. So, looks like that completes our business for tonight, and it now leads us to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir, we have Kathy Barnett.
Okay.
I believe her topic is teachers.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Barnett.
Hello. Board members, welcome, thank you. I just wanted to come tonight and, I don't have anything written, so I might jump around a little. Sorry, can you hear me now? Okay. It's too loud.
Also for the people who are.
I know. Yes. I just wanted to come and share some positive things with regards to what's happening at Matanzas. Last year, as I know, you guys probably heard me talking all over the place about teacher shortages, and I had come and talked to you guys several times, I've talked to the news, I've talked to everybody, trying to figure out ways that we could work around the teacher shortage. And what I meant for that was basically for like the core classes, like English, like my son didn't have a teacher pretty much the entire year last year. So, I wanted to share some positive things that was going on at Matanzas. The SGA coach was let go, or I don't know, left, I don't know all the particulars, but Brandy Allred is a teacher, a biology, chemistry teacher, or something like that. I'm very nervous here, I don't know why. Anyways, and she decided that her and another teacher were going to share the, the void so that the, the SGA courses could continue going on, and she was also covering her classes. So, it was split. So, I wanted to come out and let you know that that is happening, and that there are people and teachers out there that are willing to, to do things to make sure that these kids are not sitting in a classroom just without a teacher. The second person, which is Diaz, Ms. Diaz, which is in the Biology Department, they lost a teacher, I think this year, and the, they decided to get together the entire science team and figure out a way to cover the classes. So, each one of the teachers added another day or whatever, I'm not really sure how it worked. But, I wanted to just say kudos to them and our principal, and however they figured all that out, that they had an issue and they addressed it, they talked about it, and they found something that worked, and in the end, the kids got, you know, are being taught something instead of just sitting in the classroom. So, I just wanted to share that good news and, and let you know that there are options if we all put our heads together, because I know that it's not going to stop, and it's happening all over the country, it's not Flagler County, and figure out ways that we could help them, you know, whatever it is, because you guys all can brainstorm it and figure it out. But, I mean, these are two examples that are happening in our schools, in Flagler schools, and it's yay, a positive thing, and I just wanted to address it and let you guys know about it, because it's not really shown everywhere.
We reached the time limit, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
No one else.
Okay. Then we will close, public. Then we will close public comment, and we will move on to board member requests. Anybody like to make a request at this time? Hearing none, I will close board member requests.
Yes, sorry, I was just getting my notes. I was just going to repeat from earlier, board member request, you know, the master of school board training that we talked about, so I'm excited about that for the board member request from earlier. And then, just working more with the community, it kind of goes with what Ms. Kathy just said, having like town halls, getting feedback, getting creative, so that will go hand in hand with the town halls. Additionally, I'll reiterate that with the season of school choice, I want to make sure that it's very clear regarding the, the laws around school choice for sports-only reasons, as well as our processes and policies regarding the lottery system and making that lottery system very public when the demand for a, a school is, exceeds the capacity of that school to take those school choice students. Also, one of our practices in highlighting, making very clear apparent when agenda items or attachments, contents of those attachments change between the, the agenda-setting session and the school board session in which we're to vote. The session today in the workshop regarding gifted students, we spend a lot of time ensuring that students are on grade level, but it's just important, as important to ensure that we are meeting the needs of those who need that gifted education. And so, we're clearly, from the data that was shared, not per, not having an equitable maybe exposure to finding those students who need that type of education. And so, exploring some universal screener options and, and exploring what curriculum best suits students with those unique needs and abilities from some of our own gifted certified teachers, who can provide some consultation on that. And then, related today is to clear up our policy regarding leave in terms of the payments and/or benefits and ensuring that we have some clarity or maybe more defined guidelines so that we can feel comfortable approving those and ensuring that those opportunities are going to be equitably available or able to take advantage of for all of our staff and employees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think some of those policy ones you brought up, this is the perfect opportunity as we're working with Niola to, to have those conversations together. Okay, so if there are any other board member requests, we will move on to upcoming board discussion topics. Is there anything to add there, Superintendent Moore? Okay. And then, so we'll just move now to closing comments, and we'll start down at the end of the dais.
Sorry, my voice is losing me a little bit, so please bear with me. Once again, thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to sit on the dais and represent the best school, FPC. Sorry, ask for some updates. First, a big congratulations to our principal, Bobby Bossardette, who actually just won the FASC Principal of the Year. Another congratulations to our AFDC team, who won first in their Arm Regulation Division and third in the Unarmed Exhibition Division at their recent drill competition. With a special congratulations to Jasmine Vikouskis, who won second in an individual arm drill regulation. Our boys wrestling team won the Five Star Conference for the second year in a row. Our individual champions were Brayden Daly, Kevin McLean, TJ McLean, Trey Tilly, Carson Bart, and Devon Leaden. Our formality women's ensemble earned excellent ratings, including solo performances by Annabella McDermott, Logan Walden, Mia Hames, Jude Therian, Samantha Furneri, and Mallory Blackburn, which all earned superiors. Our Bulldogs, Melanie Resturo, Laura Herrera, Brazna Seth, and Ossi Brachura qualified for the state DAGA competition, which will be held from March 6th through the 9th. Our FPC dancers represented Bulldog Pride and earned a superior rating at the Volusia County Dance Assessment, with four dancers making the all-county dance team, Devon Gwen, Victoria Jones, Brooklyn Lapointe, and Amaya Pinedo. Our Bulldogs are doing great things, which wouldn't be possible without the support of our staff and faculty at FPC. Once again, thank you for this opportunity, and I hope everyone has a great night.
Thank you. So, good evening, fellow board members. Again, I would like to thank you for allowing me to sit on the dais with you all and allowing me to represent Matanzas High School. It is with great pride that I reflect on the recent accomplishments of our students and staff, which exemplify the dedication, excellence within our school community. On Valentine's Day, we celebrated the pinning of our new NHS members, and on February 24th, we recognized our National Technical Honor Society for their achievements in technical programs. Our winter sport teams have also excelled with girls weightlifting, competitive cheer, and girls wrestling advancing to states, and boys soccer reaching the regional finals. In the arts, we would love to congratulate Devin Hoffman, the recipient of the 2025 Scholastic Art Award, whose work is now on display at the Duval Public Library. Our theater production of Romeo and Juliet, featuring a performance by our staff team, was also a huge success last week. Our program's a study night on February, on February 18th saw strong attendance with families learning about new and exciting opportunities for the upcoming school year, including aerospace dual enrollment courses with Embry-Riddle, which is back, dance, and our new allied health program, which I personally am very excited for future generations to participate in. We also celebrated our SGA's success at FASC, bringing home a first-place medallion and a third-place recognition for faculty and staff. We had a Holidays Around the World event, which was super heartfelt, and it was a great gathering for immigrant families to share their cultural heritages with one another. Looking ahead, we have several exciting events, including a court observation for law students on February 28th, the College and Career Fair on March 3rd, with over 200 students registered to attend, and the NHS induction on March 4th. Spring sports are in full swing, and we anticipate another successful season. As quarter three concludes, we remain focused on providing a well-rounded education for all Matanzas Pirates. A quick little reminder as well, this is going to be our fourth and final teen town hall this Thursday, so I encourage any and all students who would like to participate middle school and high school for community service opportunities and learning about what we have to offer and discuss during that meeting. As I conclude tonight's comments, thank you for your continued support as we strive to ensure every student's success. Thank you.
And speaking of the town hall, also on April 26th, there will be a teen summit, which is dealing with the town hall, so there'll be a lot more information to come forward with that. I'd like to say, this past month, we've had lots of celebrations, our counselors, our crossing guards, our resource officers, and even bus drivers. So, thank you all that are listening and watching, we all appreciate you guys. Speaking of the bus drivers, so I was able to finally get on my Route 52 this morning, Panther Bus, and the driver goes by Ms. Judy, she was amazing. It was a long morning. We went to the elementary school, the high school, the middle school, and it was great from a parent's perspective. I just want those that may be questioning or wondering, you know, it, it's a safe place. So, she was the, she was the sweetest, she talked to every student by their name, you know, took all their umbrellas. So, I felt, you know, I, I was looking around, you know, every bus driver does their checks, and as a parent, you know, you don't really know that, and it's not just them doing it because it was me, because I was early and someone else said, hey, come here, watch me do my checks. If there's a screw missing, I mean, it, it's unbelievable, then they can't get on that bus. It was pretty cool to watch, and they all have a system in place. There's protocol, there's safety protocol, there's also safety protocol that we may not be able to know about because it's for the safety of our children, so just wanted to kind of let everyone know about that. It was a really, really fun experience. I was very tired after, but Ms. Judy was amazing, I can't wait to try it again, you know, hopefully just kind of get out there. But speaking of bus drivers, we do need more, because that is one thing, you know, if someone gets sick, and we know it's sick season, we, we need people to drive. So, I'd love to use that opportunity with town halls, like brainstorming, we need to get creative, so we just need to work together as a community, how can we get more bus drivers? How can we get more teachers? We know that they're not signing up, but let's get creative, so everyone share your ideas, right? So, let's make something positive. Also, with communication, I do want to just let everyone know, we've said it last time, and we'll say it every time, but I will tell you, between the five of us here, we have 14 children, okay? And we know how to communicate, we do communicate, and we, we are, and if you feel that you're not getting an email, please let us know. The five of us are being very proactive, we're trying to mitigate anything we can, connect you to whoever you need to speak with, and if you don't feel like you're getting that, then let us know, because I'm pretty positive we're doing that, but we are human, but I'm pretty sure we're doing whatever we can and directing you to the right staff. So, thank you, parents, for reaching out, because you are those that are, so thank you, and if we can help you, we will help you, because we're doing the best we can, and I feel like we're all working really hard for our community. The virtual teen hall, she talked about that, the town halls, I talked about it a little bit, but I really think this will be a great opportunity to brainstorm and get creative as a community, so we can try to, you know, get things moving. If we have a problem, let's turn it into a solution. So, if you have a problem, you solve it. So, that's what we will all do together. And also, if anyone is a Dogman or Captain Underpants fan, the author is on book tour, and he, the only city in Florida, he's going to be in Kissimmee, so they say Orlando, but it's Kissimmee Civic Center, so he'll be there Friday night, so I'm going. And maybe, you know, get a book signed for Flagler Schools, we'll see, but, you know, kids love this stuff, and reading is important, and he's someone that actually has learning disabilities, and kids look up to that, and I love it, so, so just want to let you know. Important dates, last thing, February, not February, March 13th is the end of the quarter, March 14th is a teacher workday, so teachers will be working really hard for us, and then students will not be at the schools, so don't drop them off. And then, spring break is March 17th through March 21st. So, thank you all for a wonderful day and evening. Nice. You have boys, so I'm sure Captain Underpants is, right, a, a much-loved book.
I made teachers a student.
That's so cute. Yeah, thank you tonight, I really loved the presentation from Ms. Fulmer and music in our schools, you know, speaking of students who, you know, really helping that whole student thrive, music can be such an integral part, performance arts. And I know this week, we have our band teachers working hard at the MPA events that'll be happening, and the students who've put in hours and hours of preparation to learn instruments, to learn music as a different, another language. And so, I wish them all the very best luck in, in that MPA performance that's coming up in competition. I'm also very excited to share that Lauren and I attended the Finance Forum for our school board members last month. It was extremely informative, and there's a part two. And so, I've just been really appreciative of the state of Florida's school board support, the FC, Florida, FSBA, got to remember all my acronyms, but they've been a wonderful resource in, in helping us come on board and really become acclimated and knowledgeable about all of this, all of the responsibilities that we owe to our, our communities. A couple of updates regarding some of my outreach efforts. Flagler Technical College works in conjunction with Career Source, and Career Source is the regionalized arm of what used to be Road to Success, and they have an opening for a, a role at their particular, at their Flagler office here. So, if you have an interest in helping students find their path and career in life, as well as helping some of those who are in transition in their careers, go check that out. FPC is having a Read Across Flagler event Thursday, March 6th, in the Town Center, and so I hope to be able to make it to that, there's a lot of activities this coming week, though. We'll see what we could do. I'm sure we'll divide and conquer. Additionally, the SAT for juniors is March 5th. I wish all the juniors best of luck in that assessment. You're more than a number, but it doesn't help to get a high, it doesn't hurt to get a high number, help those dreams, right, move a, a little closer to reality. Also, FPC has a TV Annual Film Festival, March 13th, seems really exciting, lots of creativity there. As you know, they partner with the auditorium, the Flagler Auditorium, Fitzgerald Auditorium, so that's a wonderful program, and love to see all of their skills on display during that event. I was very proud to see that often, you know, middle school is kind of like, oh, gosh, the middle school years can be tough, but BTMS has been rocking it this last month and showing that when you give kids the opportunity to thrive and also reach out to their community, yes, even teenagers, even those middle schoolers, really enjoy to do so. Ms. Lori Antis's class and Buddy Taylor placed fifth in the nation in an AI explorers program, and so that was really amazing. They're probably more knowledgeable than any of us up here about AI now, so I'm, I'm, I would love to stop by and chat with her and her class, I'll reach out. And also, Mrs. Brooks' art class, they connected with the Windsor residents and made valentines and items and dropped by to, to visit and, and share just the general caring of each other, which we need more of in this world. And there are a lot of opportunities for credit recovery at BTMS, and since we're closing in, as you mentioned, Ms. Ramirez, on quarter three, you got one more quarter to make it happen. BTMS offers credit recovery Tuesday, Thursday, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., or Saturdays at 8:45, and just general tutoring and support from 2:00 to 4:00. This is, people pay $50 an hour for this stuff, so take advantage of it, it's out there for you. Also, the African-American Mentorship Program is in need of those who can provide some time, and I know today was a recognition of volunteers, and we very much thank those three lovely individuals who are giving the most valuable resource time. But the numbers of the volunteers in the AAMP African-American Mentorship Program hasn't fully rebounded from COVID, so if you are able to and interested, Carl Jones is, is your guy, or you can also contact Mr. Sanfilippo, who is also helping to support and get, get the information out to the volunteers, or myself, happy to do that. Finally, March is a time in which the school board is going to go to the legislature and advocate for the agenda that has been presented a couple weeks back. But we have, and I want to remind parents, because we've had some parents and community members reach out about issues that are near and dear to their heart, if you want to see some of those changes, it really helps us if the constituents are contacting their representation. And so, just as a reminder, we have Mr. Greco here in Palm Coast, Suite 1 at Palm Coast Parkway, his information is online, you can make an appointment, you can go talk to him, write him, email him, and it helps us to tell that story in a more impactful way when we have the community members also backing. when we have the community members also backing up what we see are those issues that we're advocating for and that they see it's not just, you know, the five of us in our opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things I want to highlight again, just to our school resource deputies. And we talked about that today and highlighted what they do. I really appreciate the work that they do. As a former SRO myself, I know firsthand the impact that they have on students' lives and vice versa. And so I really appreciate the work that they do each day with being an educator, being an informal counselor, the things that were mentioned in the, earlier today. I really appreciate that. I just want to highlight the sheriff's office for the work that they do and their responses each and every day to our needs of our community and within our schools. So thank you very much. Mr. Dyer, who read the proclamation for music, what an outstanding singer he is. If you've never heard him sing, you need to find him and let him start singing to you because he can sing one of the best renditions I've ever heard of the Star Spangled Banner in my entire life. Fantastic man. Teddy Totin, congratulations again for him and the spelling bee winner. Just thank him. And really, Ms. Kathy came up and talked a little bit about the exceptional work that goes on. And she highlighted Ms. Diaz and Ms. Aldridge. And again, I want to thank her for doing that, for her taking the time to really come up and talk about something good. You know, a lot of times we hear a lot of bad things and negative things, but I really appreciate her taking the time to come and do that. Talking about some, met with a parent this past week over in one of the communities off of Whiteview. They had a safety issue related to a bus stop location and was able to get to the right spots. And after an evaluation, it was an unsafe bus stop and we were able to get that moved. And some changes are being made based off of that parent's concern and going out there and looking at that location myself. And it was, I just wanted to highlight again, we are taking these things, when the parents or community members bring us things, we're addressing them and getting them to the right spot so we can address those. I want to highlight, highlight again Rimfire Elementary. We were looking for community members to have our ratio where it needed to be. And we were able to make sure that we brought in a couple of community members to where we have that ratio where it needs to be and actually above where it needs to be. So I appreciate those community members for stepping up and helping us with that. And again, to our volunteers, I think we have one left. I want to recognize you again. Thank you so much for what you do. You can put that in the paper too, okay? All right. And then one of the last things too is we, Ms. Ruddy and I were able to participate in Blue Jeans and Bling for 4H and FFA for youth scholarships. And we've got, what a great event to be able to highlight agriculture in Flagler County, which I hope that we will continue to do in this county and what's made Flagler County what it is today and from its roots of agriculture. And that leads me to our legislative updates. We've got several things that we are continuing to follow that are in our priority list and we're working closely with our delegate. Our administrative staff have gone up and met with the delegation as well. As Ms. Ruddy mentioned earlier, we will be going up and meeting with our delegation in March, really pushing the priorities for our school district. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring funds back to our district that are going to help each and every one of our students, which we're here for. Those Senate bills that we continue to follow are Senate Bill 1110 and Senate Bill 700, when it relates to the rural initiatives that Flagler County can potentially benefit from. Again, I want to thank Senator Leake, Representative Brandon, who is not in our district, who met with us recently on some issues that will potentially affect us in Flagler County. And then also Representative Greco, as we can, again, as we work through these priorities for Flagler Schools. And I will yield my time.
All right. I just want to say thank you to our principals who came out today to share about their schools. I know y'all are working really hard and I get the weekly updates from Benell, Ms. Presley, you know, always pushing reading and I'm just glad to see that. It's a push that I haven't seen in a long time and, you know, I know we're striving to increase our grades, especially when I think of how my older children were in those early learning years during COVID and coming back from that. So I'm just glad to see, you know, just how hard they're working and we're all working so hard to get our kids reading. It's so important. That's, that's their foundation. And then I know we've got a lot going on in our country. I just thought this was interesting. Yesterday, Governor DeSantis announced Florida Doge efforts and I've just been reminded through all this also of our local responsibility with tax dollars. So, you know, I know sometimes questions sound stupid, but, but none of them are. We, we're looking at everything. We want to make sure that we are fiscally responsible. It's very important to me, so, and I know to all of us. So yeah, you know, we got to look at everything and see where we can save. And yeah, I don't really have a whole lot. Hope everybody has a great week. This year is flying by, you know, already planning and getting ready to make sure we're all there for graduation. It's kind of crazy. So thank you. Have a great night.
Yes, all great comments and I echo many of some of your sentiments. And I do want to highlight, you know, our outstanding school volunteer award tonight. You know, that is, it is just, when you volunteer in a school, it is so valuable to the teachers and also to the educational outcome and to the, and to the parents as well. Because, you know, the teacher has many students in that class and there's times where that extra helping hand just makes such a difference. And I've spoken to teachers and they, they always say, we're so grateful for our volunteers. So I just wanted to put an extra spotlight on those that were honored here tonight for their efforts. And also to our school resource deputies, you know, it is, it's just such an amazing thing that they do. You know, they're there for many reasons. You know, first thought is, you know, they're there to protect our students and that is one of the highest priorities. But I've seen how they engage with students and how students respond to their presence in our schools as well. So really super grateful and I'm glad we were able to honor them here tonight. And the, the last thing is, I did, I did get a chance to, I had my first meeting at the Carver Center, as now their liaison. And I just wanted to share a fun event that happened. So right after the board meeting let out, there was a group of ladies, about probably 15 of them playing bingo. And so I just popped in to say hi and joined in with them for a game. And I tell you, they, they brought a lot of joy to my day, spending a little time with them. And they're very competitive over that bingo too. So there's prizes to win, so. So you heard it, that's when, when you can go play bingo at the community center there, so. And I just want to thank the board for a productive meeting this evening. And thank you, staff, and I will pass it on to Superintendent Moore.
Thank you. Wanting to just highlight our career fair again. It will be open to our students during our school hours, but from 2:00 to 5:00, we do invite our public to come and get connected to the resources that are here in our community and our community across the state. Just a reminder that choice windows are open right now. And so if you are interested in your child attending a school that is not in their zone, please make sure that you follow along with those deadlines and those dates. Also wanting to really, really stress for our high school students, our programs of study application, that is a part of our choice process and that too is open. So please make sure that we adhere to those, to those dates and those deadlines. I want to thank our staff for being here. I know, you know, that you're there back in the background and maybe the camera can't, doesn't catch you, but I appreciate you guys and I appreciate you, you being here. And as I look at, you know, 8 o'clock tonight, many of you, I started my day with at, you know, 8 o'clock this morning. So I appreciate you and all you do to support our entire organization. So thank you to each of you. I want to say a happy 115th day of school. Lots of great things that we've already accomplished, but many more great days ahead of us. And so before we end tonight and before I say goodnight, I'll always like to just bring it back to our guiding principles. And so I will read those guiding principles. Children first, trust and respect for all, empower others, teamwork, excellence, quality and consistency, commitment to individual needs, and then get to yes. Good night.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore. This meeting is now adjourned.